Hi, if we could, good afternoon. If we could start taking our seats, we'll get the special meeting started. Thank you. Okay, great. We're president, so I will call this meeting to order and ask Carrie to read the role. Take the role, rather.
Chair Brooks.
Here.
Vice Chair Ariscotta.
Here.
Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager. Regent Brown.
Here.
Regent Carvalho.
Here.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo.
Here.
Regent Downs.
Here.
Regent Goodman. Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins.
Here.
Regent Tarkanian.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you, Carrie. Regent Crawford, would you kindly lead us in the pledge?
Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ariscotta, would you kindly read the land acknowledgement?
Thank you. Land acknowledgement. Before beginning, we take a moment to recognize that here in Nevada, we stand on the land of the Wasishu, Washo, Numu, Northern Paiute, Nui, Western Shoshone, and the Nuwu, Southern Paiute. We take a moment to recognize and honor their stewardship that continues into today. With this recognition, we state an intention to rightfully include their voice and respect them as the 27 sovereign tribal nations of Nevada.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll move right into item number one, which is public comment. Is there any public comment in Elko?
No public comment in Elko.
Thank you. Is there any public comment in Reno? Hearing none. Is there any public comment in Las Vegas?
No public comment in Reno.
Thank you. We'll go to Reno and then come right back to Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Dana Trimble, T R I M B L E, D R I Diversity Officer and Idea Council Chair. On behalf of the Idea Council, I would like to welcome our new regents. For background, each of our institutions is expected to have an idea representative on the Idea Council. We meet monthly and represent our students, faculty, and staff, and we are on the front lines of a very diverse system. The Idea Council is tasked with making recommendations to the chancellor and the board on proposed goals, policies, practices, strategies, and idea accountability measures. We are also tasked with sharing best practices for idea between institutions and supporting and monitoring the boards, idea goals, and strategies. Recent changes have created challenges to fulfilling our council's mission. We request your support for the following. One, the return of quarterly idea committee meetings. Two, the assignment of a dedicated staff member at the vice chancellor level to communicate idea efforts with the chancellor and the board. And three, the addition of an update from the Idea Council to the full board agenda, similar to that of the Faculty Senate Chair's report. The reduction of the idea committee meetings from quarterly to semi-annually has created hurdles to responsiveness on time-sensitive issues. The draft Juneteenth resolution initially proposed in January 22 was submitted for review in early November in order to get a board vote prior to the 2023 legislative session. Being that the board has yet to review the resolution and the legislative session begins on February 6, the Juneteenth resolution may no longer be actionable prior to the beginning of the legislative session. The equity statement initially drafted in February of '21 is another item that will be surpassing the two-year mark of awaiting review. In addition to quarterly meetings, assignment of a dedicated staff member with direct and clear lines of communication to the chancellor and the board is needed. Mr. Williams has been tremendous support to the council. However, communication through a vice chancellor, along with updates from the Idea Council, placed on the full board agenda is necessary to ensure the committee's efforts, especially those that are time-sensitive, are known to the chancellor and the board. Your support of these changes will allow the Idea Council and the board to better communicate. Ultimately, the true measure of a system's values is where we put our time and resources. We trust that the board values and understands the importance of continuing to build a strong and healthy ideas-based ENSI, where all students, employees, and community members feel welcomed, safe, and supported. This is critical for the future of ENSI. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Kent Ervin, State President, Nevada Faculty Alliance. For the record, my name is spelled K E N T E R V I N. Good afternoon and Happy New Year. A warm welcome to the new regents on the board. In the spirit of today's orientation, I would like to give an explanation of academic freedom and shared governance. That could take hours, but I have two minutes. So listen up. Academic freedom is the freedom to teach. Academic freedom is the freedom to determine curriculum and academic standards. Academic freedom is the freedom to explore all avenues of scholarship, research, and creative expression, and to disseminate the results. Academic freedom is the freedom to speak or write on matters of public concern and on any matter related to professional duties and the functioning and governance of the academic institutions. Instructors are entitled to academic freedom in the classroom. That does not mean totally free rein to discuss material with no relation to the subject, but teachers must be free to discuss controversial material without fear of retribution or censorship. Controversy is at the heart of free academic inquiry. College and university faculty are citizens, members of a learned profession, and officers of an educational institution. When they speak or write as citizens on matters of public concern, they must be free from institutional censorship or discipline. Shared governance is a part of the academic freedom for faculty collectively. Faculty have primary responsibility for curriculum, subject matter, and methods of instructions, research, faculty status, and those aspects of student life which relate to the educational process. The responsibility for faculty status includes appointments, reappointments, decisions not to reappoint, promotions, the granting of tenure, and dismissal. Due process, including the input of faculty review committees, is essential in all of these areas. We work, we look forward to working with all of you in the coming year, and we are pleased to see for the first time, we believe, a majority female Board of Regents. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, public comment in Las Vegas?
For the record, Dr. Marcela Rodriguez Campo, M A R C E L A R O D R I G U E C A M P O, pronoun she/her/they. I am the Director of the Office of Community Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion at Nevada State College and an advisory member of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Council. I want to extend a warm welcome to our new ENSI Board of Regents, Susan Brager, Heather Brown, Stephanie Goodman, Shelley Crawford, and Jeffrey Downs. Thank you for your service and your commitment to ensuring that all of our students across our system have access to a transformative and equitable higher education experience. As a member of the Idea Council, I would like to personally invite each of you, along with the rest of the board, to engage with the Idea Council, where we support, offer expertise, and make recommendations to our leaders to address the persistent equity gaps that exist within our system. It is important for you to know that 58.5% of our students in the system come from a historically minoritized community, and it is our duty as a system to ensure that we are serving them. In order to do this, it is critical that equity and inclusion serve as a constant compass to guide each of us in all we do to best serve our students. Just this fall, the Idea Council has advised its board on the antidiscrimination resolution, which has since passed and now requires all ENSI institutions, including the board, to undergo antidiscrimination and bias trainings. We have offered our expertise on numerous issues, including the recent DACA decisions, to ensure that we have supports in place to ensure the success of our students. I would like to echo the growing concerns that have been raised by my colleagues and again by the leaders of the Idea Council. For example, we had advice on the Juneteenth resolution and the equity statement, but unfortunately, due to delays by the board, by not putting it on agendas, or by pushing items back, we have not been able to progress in these specific initiatives. And so, to address these concerns, we asked the board to commit to the following. Attend and engage in the Idea Council and committee meetings. Change the committee meetings to a quarterly schedule. And maintain the concerns and issues brought forth by the Idea Council by having a standing item on future agendas. I ask that you please make equity and inclusion a priority as you serve on this board. Welcome, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is opening remarks. And I want to thank and introduce Joe Becker, who is here from the Deputy Attorney General's Office. He's providing us OML guidance while he's here. And I also want to say thank you to Special Real Estate Counsel and former Regent Michael Wicksum, who's here and going to be providing us some guidance on fiduciary and public trust duties. What I'd like to do now is move right into our, another item regarding board governance and the roles of Regent and Chancellor. Acting Chancellor Dale Urkiaga and I have spent a considerable amount of time going over the slide decks and compiling information to present to you today some information. And we'll get that to you right now, and I believe I'll lead off on it, and the acting chancellor will be handed off a section of slides. So let me move over to where the podium is. Okay, fantastic. Can we, do we have that first slide deck ready to go? And when I say that the acting chancellor and I have spent lots of time putting this together, what I really meant was two minutes. Essentially, in terms of us working out who's doing what.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So let's move on to the first, the second slide, please. So the constitutional authority for the board. The University of Nevada was created by the Nevada State Constitution. The Constitution also establishes the Board of Regents. The Constitution and Nevada revised statute further set forth requirements concerning the University of Nevada and prescribed certain powers, duties, and limitations upon the board. Next slide, please. For board officers, the duties of the chair are to approve all board and committee agendas prior to publication and notice of such agendas, to preside at all meetings of the board, to appoint members of the board to serve as liaisons for the board, to school boards, government entities, and other constituencies, to serve as the leader of the board for all ceremonial purposes, and to perform any and all other duties assigned or delegated to the chair by these bylaws or policies adopted by the board. The duties of the vice chair are to preside at all meetings of the board when the chair is absent, to perform the duties of the chair when the chair is unable to perform such duties due to absence or inability, to consult with the chair on the approval of all board and committee agendas prior to publication and notice of such agendas, and to perform any and all of the duties assigned or delegated to the vice chair by these bylaws or policies adopted by the board. And certainly, when we talk about the bylaws, what we're talking about is actually what's in the handbook that can be referenced, so that there's a clear understanding of what these duties are and what the policy says in terms of the duties, how that reads. Next slide, please. So committees. The board has established the following committees through its bylaws. Academic Research and Student Affairs, Audit, Compliance, and Title Committees, Business, Finance, and Facilities, Health Science System, the Idea Committee, Investment Committee, Security, and Workforce. The board may also establish additional special or ad hoc committees, for example, the ad hoc Chancellor Search Committee. The chancellor may also establish committees, for example, the acting chancellor plans to establish a committee on mental health and behavioral health. And so what I would offer is that some of these committees meet at various times throughout the year. And as we've heard, there's some interest for some committees to meet maybe more often than they currently do, and I think that that's just part of ongoing conversation in terms of what best serves the board and what can best serve the system in terms of the implementation of the committees and how we're getting together to address various issues. Next slide, please. So the system and the chancellor. The system was created by the Board of Regents in 1968, codified by the legislature in 1969. Officers of the system include the chancellor and presidents of the institutions. To govern the system, regents adopt policies known as the Board of Regents Handbook. Procedures and Guidelines Manual implements board policy, and then the board has delegated authority to implement many policies to the chancellor. Presidents of the institutions also have certain delegated authority. And when we start to take a look at some of this in policy, we'll see that there are some areas where the board comes into play in terms of the communication and collaboration with the chancellor, and there are some areas in where the chancellor is essentially acting independently by the powers of the board to be able to get things done. Let's see. Next slide, please. So board employees. The system employees are employees appointed to the board would be the chancellor, chief of staff, and special counsel, the chief internal auditor, and presidents of the institutions. And as we start to move forward with this presentation, I'm actually going to turn this over to the acting chancellor, who will guide us through some of the chancellor duties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Dale Urkiaga, acting chancellor. Before I begin to talk about me, let me stop. The chair talked about you, so do you have questions about the role of the board, the operation of committees, your employees, the things that the chair covered? Maybe we'll stop and just see if either the new regents or previously existing regents, I don't want to say old regents. Ma'am?
Just a question. Ad hoc committees were mentioned. What exactly is an ad hoc committee? How long can it last, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I? An ad hoc committee is created by the board under our bylaws, and the chair appoints the members, and an ad hoc committee or a special committee expires after one year. So in the prior year, the board established a strategic planning ad hoc or special committee, and as the regents who were here in 2022 will remember, that committee sunsetted by operation of bylaws at the end of 2022. So that would be an example. So those are committees which you appoint, and the chair then pursuant to your bylaws names the members, and they do expire.
Go ahead, Chair. Chair DeCarlo.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to add on to the committees that when I came on the board in 2017, I am now the longest-serving member, which is hard to believe, but we had an athletic committee, and we sunsetted it because at the time, we were hiring the coaches, hiring the athletic directors. We put that authority down to the campuses where it truly does belong. So some of these committees are really like the core of what we do. I think ARSA for sure, the academic research, student affairs, audit, business. But we can, of course, IDEA has evolved in a really great way, but it's something we can, as a board, look at down the road, too, if there's other things we need to do. So this is not set in stone. I just wanted to add that because like anything, it needs to be looked at over time and modified if it's necessary. Thank you.
I would agree with that, and since I've been here for six months, for the record, Dale Urkiaga, I would suggest that you review the standing committees and determine their continued viability and necessity, and if there is some other topic. The board also sets, as you heard intimated in public commentary, public comment, when those committees meet. We have regular committees that meet quarterly, and we have what we call off-cycle committees. That's at your decision. That is not a decision of the chancellor. And so I would encourage you to, as you listen to the public comment and as you think about the committee, and if you wonder why is this committee still a committee, you all can change that. It's in your bylaws. Any other questions concerning?
Regent Del Carlo?
Thank you, Chair. Also, I think I lost my train of thought. We used to, like ARSA would meet at the same time as Business, Finance, and Facilities. And one of the things that the pandemic did, because we were watching everything on Zoom, we could only be watching one meeting at a time. So what has evolved out of the pandemic was that all the board ends up, even though, if you're on the committee, you're of course expected to be there, but any regent can attend and is encouraged to attend all the other meetings. But we now don't schedule the meetings against each other. So we, and I hope as a board, this is our decision, too, that we continue that. I think it's really important that all 13 of us know what's going on on all the other committees, because we do switch around committees quite often. So I just hope this board keeps that, that we're not in conflict. Thank you.
Agreed.
Mr. Chair? Okay. Now I get to talk about me. So since I get to talk about me, when you look at this slide, let's start with my name, which is not here. My last name is pronounced Urkiaga. It is not pronounced any of the ways it is often pronounced. And because it is not an easy name, please feel free to call me Dale. Many folks in the system have given up and simply now just call me Chancellor Dale. I'm fine. But if you wish to try, for formality, it is pronounced Urkiaga. And I likely won't correct you, but I thought I would start there. So let me talk a little bit about the Office of Chancellor. As you heard from the chair, the chancellor's office was created in 1968. Prior to that time, the system was comprised really of just a university, and as the two universities grew apart, they were run by chancellors, and the system was run by a president, which is the constitutional title. In 1968, and then subsequently in 1969, the legislature agreed to that, and they swept the titles. The person who holds this job became the chancellor, and the persons at the institutions all became presidents. The chancellor is the chief executive officer and ex officio treasurer. That's the title. I'm still waiting for Andrew to tell me what part of my job it means. If you think about this job, it is a CEO's job. It is an administrator's job. I administer the policies you create. I implement those policies. Some are also implemented at the presidential level, at the institutional level. The chair mentioned the handbook. You create policy by virtue of the handbook. So many of you are familiar with the Nevada revised statutes from your previous jobs. That is how the legislature creates law or policy, and then agencies follow it, and agencies adopt what are called regulations, somewhat similar to that. You create the handbook, giving me or the president's direction on what your policy guidelines are. We implement what are called procedures and guidelines. There is a separate book. It's on the website. I think if you could put the two together, it's about 647 pages. I am an insomniac, and so when I cannot sleep at night, I read the handbook and the Procedures and Guidelines Manual. I recommend it to you for your daily reading. And I'm not really joking. Read the handbook. It is your job. It is what you do. You are bound by it, as we are bound by it. And so the chancellor, despite what some people think about this job, really just implements those policies. He or she does so through the system administration staff here in this building and in a building like it in Reno, and through the institutional presidents, who have similar authority on their campuses. As you all know, the chancellor is appointed by and serves at the pleasure of the board. You collectively are my boss, and the chancellor has a contract, as do our presidents, which I will talk about, I think, now. One of the unique features about our system, and you will hear this a lot for the new regents, the Nevada System of Higher Education is unique in America, both in the scope of your authority, your constitutional imprimatur, and the fact that you govern a three-tiered system of universities, a state college, and community colleges. That's quite rare. So the presidents in our system are also appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the board. The presidents report to the chancellor for the administration of their institutions. So if you think about your business or your other governmental agency, I am sort of the line supervisor of the presidents. I approve their leave. I approve their parking reimbursement, and I work with them on the administration of their respective institutions. They are still your employee. They are not my employee. And I'll speak to evaluations in a little bit. And so this question has come up a lot from the new regents. You have a free line of communication to the chancellor and to all eight of your presidents. You do not have to call me to call a president. You can call a president. You can ask for information, and I'll explain how that works, too, because it's ENSI. We have a process for everything, and it's all in the, say it with me, handbook. So, but I want to reiterate that you have all of us as your employees, the chancellor, eight presidents. You have that line of communication. The chair also indicated you have a chief of staff and special counsel. Today, we have an interim chief of staff. She is your employee, and you appoint the chief internal auditor, who you will hear from tomorrow. You have a direct line to all those people. If something goes wrong, you are the appointing authority for those people, and you deal with that. That is unique. But I want to be clear, you have a relationship with the presidents, and you will hear from the presidents more at quarterly meetings. Presidents run their campuses. They have provosts. They have vice presidents. They have deans. They manage the business at each campus under guidelines set by this office or policy set by you. But we all work for you, and we work as a team. I want to talk a little bit about the chancellor's cabinet, because you'll hear this term a lot. And I will say there that this is the core of cabinet. One name and title is not here, and that is because the individual is currently on medical, family medical leave. So we start there. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief of Staff, Crystal Abba, is a person you probably all know. Crystal now is in the chancellor's office, and she works directly with me. And so she interacts with this board when I cannot, for example. The three positions that are here are the, really the nerve center of how system administration operates. And so while they report to and are appointed by the chancellor, they are your key implementers of your policy. You have Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Mr. Martinez, who's sitting with you for purpose of advising the chair as he goes through this meeting on the matters of the handbook. Your counsel or your deputy attorney general advises you on the open meeting law. You have a Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance. Sometimes we say Finance Administration. That is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Claire, to my right. And there is a Vice Chancellor for Student and Academic Affairs, would be known as a Chief Academic Officer. Today, Renee Davis, to my further right, is the interim vice chancellor. You will learn ENSI parlance for the new regents. When there is a vacancy, we will appoint someone as an acting, me, or as an interim Vice Chancellor Davis. They mean different things in our world. Actings can't then be appointed to the job without a special consideration. Interims can be after a period of time. So today, we have an interim president at Western Nevada College. Kyle Dalpe, who you probably know, has been in that role almost a year, but he is an interim president. The other seven institutions are led by presidents. So the chancellor's cabinet, you'll hear this word a lot. It's really, if you think about the chancellor today, the chief of staff, and then these three positions, the chancellor's cabinet implements all those policies in the handbook that you have given us to implement. We do so through adoption of procedures and guidelines in that other book that is also posted online. So that's the meat of how we run this place. You will interact with vice chancellors at the committees. You heard, again, in public comment, the desire for a vice chancellor role to supervise a particular function. That vice chancellor role doesn't exist anymore. Because of our budget, two other vice chancellor roles have been eliminated. And so we are a bare-bones cabinet today, and so we are covering all the committees and all of the duties of the handbook in the best way we can. So this is, this is sort of, I just want you to understand sort of the operating system of how I work. And then you can see within the chancellor's office, and we use that term interchangeably. When we say chancellor's office, sometimes we mean those people who you see on this chart, who report directly to the chancellor. Sometimes we refer to system administration writ large as the chancellor's office. The key positions today that, again, might address some of the questions you have heard, as I've mentioned, executive vice chancellor and chief of staff, Abba, is on family leave. We have an institutional research arm. You will hear Renee, interim vice chancellor Davis, explain that to you tomorrow, what institutional research does. Its name pretty much says what it does. We have a human resources department. Our department is one person. We have struggled to add staff there during the recruitment challenges in the post-pandemic economy, so we're adding some consulting services. But Human Resources is, under my operation, housed in the chancellor's office. That has not been the case always. Human Resources has resided in other places. And then I have just created, and you got a note from me this week, a Director of Community Engagement, Equity, and Inclusion, and I have staffed that position. That position, a position like that, used to report to a vice chancellor or in fact be a vice chancellor. We cannot afford We cannot afford a vice chancellor salary. And so I split the job into a Director of Government Relations, which today reports to CFO Klinger and this new position, the Director of Community Engagement, Equity and Inclusion. But you'll see that person, Mr. Williams, in this chart, reports to the chancellor. So while I cannot use a vice chancellor title, I understand the importance of that work. I have lived some of that work. And so that's where I have put that position. So that's my core operation that, that works with me on a day-to-day basis to implement your policies through cabinet. So the duties of the chancellor, I will not run through all of these for you. For the new regions, the board, after my appointment in July, the board, ju, sorry.
Excuse me, Chancellor. That's okay, Regent, go ahead.
Question, yeah. Heather Brown, for the record, just for situational awareness, with your cabinet, where do these folks live and do they split their time between the North and the South?
Thank you for the question. Yep, thank you for the question. So the, I'll include Vice Chancellor Abba. So of the four positions, three reside in Reno, one resides here. Mr. Martinez lives here. And those who work in Reno, particularly Vice Chancellor Davis and Vice Chancellor CFO Klinger, spend time in this office. I would not represent that they divide their time evenly, but they are here as necessary. So today we are some in the North, one in the South. And if you don't know, I do split my time. I maintain a residence here and a residence in Reno. And so people are always guessing which end of the state I'm in, but we do go back and forth. Thank you for the question.
Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed that Director of Community Engagement, Equity and Inclusion is here, but where does the government affairs person, the Director of Government Affairs, land?
I apologize, ma'am. Mr. Chair threw you to Regent Perkins. The Director of Government Relations, Alejandro Rodriguez, I'm like Dana White, reports operationally to the CFO because Mr. Klinger has unique experience before the Nevada legislature. And so he has agreed to accept that as another duty as assigned. Thank you for the question. Anything else about the office or the cabinet, the handbook? No? So let me talk a little bit about the duties of the chancellor. When I was appointed, knowing that you would be going through a chancellor search, the previous board created an ad hoc committee to review the roles and responsibilities of the chancellor. That body met, I think, three times, maybe four, and went through the duties of the chancellor, which are essentially the chancellor's job description, which are enumerated in your bylaws. And then all of the other areas of the handbook, where, or statute, where the chancellor is assigned some duty. And the committee recommended to the board and the board adopted a number of changes in December. There is one change that will come to you for a second vote. You will learn when you hear from the lawyers. Portions of the handbook require two votes, like first reading and then a vote. So they will require two hearings. So one of those you'll see in March. But most of those responsibilities and roles have been updated. So that's the summary, two pages that I have before you, the 17 duties of the chancellor. Incidentally, the chancellor's roles appear in 300 citations in the handbook and the procedures and guidelines manual. So this is just the surface. And we'll not read them all to you. I'll call a couple out for special attention. Number four here, the chancellor is responsible for the presentation of all INSI matters to the governor's office and the state legislature. This, interestingly, for those of you who like history, is one of the original duties of the chancellor. It was felt even then that the system needed to speak with one voice when speaking to the governor and the legislature. So I present the budget. I work, will go to the legislature on your behalf. When we come to you for a special legislative meeting in the coming weeks, I'll go through how that works. I don't just go to Carson City and run with scissors on my own. I am bound by the handbook to represent you in a certain way if you have taken a position. And so I will ask for your position on some things before session begins. If this board has not taken a position, then the chancellor is allowed to take a position with the governor and the legislature, but is required to notify you of that. So I will tell you, having observed INSI for many of my 30 years in public life, this has been a bit all over the map, how chancellors and regents have done this. And over time, the board has sort of perfected this system. So we'll talk more about that as we get closer to the legislative session. But given when this orientation is being held and when some of you are joining, it is a, it is a key responsibility of my job for the next four months. On the next page, I'll call out just a couple. The chancellor serves as the contracting officer for INSI and executes all contracts. Fun fact, INSI processes across the chancellor's desk about 400 contracts per year. And so I joke that really what I do is sign my name a lot, but those contracts go through a rigorous process. We just updated the code, the handbook, to say which contracts would still come to you. You have reserved, the, the previous board has reserved, I think it's over $5 million. So if a contract is worth more than $5 million, it will come to the board. I can't execute that on my own. Previously I could. And then we have changed the level of delegation at which level a president can sign contracts. It used to be a million and now it's two. Presidents sign even more contracts, as you can imagine, the running of an institution the size of UNLV. It's everything, I will tell you, even what reaches me, it's everything from contracts that deal with the intellectual property rights of someone whose book we publish, to purchasing turf for the athletic fields, to complex information technology contracts. So it is an important part of this job. And we've also instituted a way to report to you what I'm doing all day when I'm signing those 400 contracts. You will get to see a roll-up report. That was not previously there. And then I would point you to numbers 12 and 13, the evaluation of the presidents. So the annual evaluation of your president, you all have a job, you've probably received an annual evaluation. The presidents are evaluated by the chancellor on an annual basis. You, incidentally, through your chair, evaluate the chancellor on an annual basis. So the annual evaluation of the presidents is solely the purview of the chancellor. I meet with them. We just did this process. They give me their goals for the prior year. We talk about what they've met. I produce a document to them, which goes in their personnel file. That is a confidential document, but as a regent, you have the right to see those confidential documents. You have to see them in the file. We're not emailing it to you, but you can look at those records. Periodic evaluations occur in the final 12 months before a presidential contract expires. They are typically four-year contracts. So we're coming up on a year, because we appointed so many presidents whose contracts are about to expire, we're coming up on a year where barring any retirements, we will initiate six periodic evaluations of presidents. For that process, a committee is appointed. The chancellor appoints that committee. It is staffed now by board policy by an outside evaluator. And we will have the same evaluator across committees so that there is some standardization. But that was, there was quite a bit of conversation about that at the roles and responsibilities committee. So I wanted to be clear where you fit in that process. Periodic evaluations come to you at a public meeting. You accept them in public and then you decide how to dispense with that individual's contract, different from an annual. An annual is a one-to-one, goes in a file. The periodic goes through a committee and then comes to you. So I think those are the only ones I'll call out, but I'll pause here just to see of the duties of the chancellor, anything you want to know about, anything that you have always wondered, anything that I have said that has confused you.
Regent Carvalho?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding contracts, there is a difference between regular contracts and those regarding real estate.
Thank you.
And you might want to elaborate on that.
Thank you. So yes, so real estate transactions are different. Real estate transactions do come across my desk, but they also come to you. So one of the things you'll see coming in March, this, the system owns a great deal of real property. And so you get a rolled-up report of all of those pieces of property. They are assigned to institutions and, and those transactions you will deal with, separate from me. We have separate legal counsel because our real estate portfolio is so substantial and because many of our real estate transactions are quite complex. We do everything from buy a home adjacent to a university so that we can have a buffer for future growth, to sell assets at what was the military base, it's dead, that we no longer use. So every meeting, you'll see some sort of real estate transaction. They are incredibly complex. Thank you, Regent Carvalho.
Regent Borland?
Thanks, Chair. Chancellor Urkeyaga, I got your name correct last year. I had asked for some information on these very things that you're talking about. And I do know you sent us a lot of information, but it was that old saying, you know, great shot, wrong target. What I'd asked for wasn't in there. It didn't tell me where those monies have gone. And I've spoken with Mr. Klinger. It would be really appreciated by me, at least, to hold people accountable, to know where that money has gone. What you sent us was just telling me all the properties. I don't need that. I needed what happened to that money and it's in the millions. So I'm not, I'm not sure, because you are the chancellor and you answer to the board or do you answer just to the Chair?
Answer to the board.
You answer to the board. So I'm part of the board. So I can request something from you.
I'll talk about that in a moment.
Okay, good. And then hopefully I can get that answer. How far has that got? We're talking about real estate, so help me there, I'm a wee bit lost, you know? I always say I'm a simple man and these things are really complicated to me.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Borland. I think you're far less simple than you say you are, but I appreciate the lowering expectations. So with due respect, I did answer your question. In the cover memo, any money from a real estate transaction returns to the institution which held that asset. So that money is held at whatever institution. What I could not answer for you is which one? Because as I said, we hold hundreds of transactions. It's my understanding that you subsequently had a conversation with the chief financial officer who's offered to show you those transactions that occurred in 2022, which are called out in that report. And he will ask the institutions on your behalf where that money resides. They may have immediately repurposed that money. That money may have been used to pay off a debt or that money may have been invested. I couldn't, could not answer that question with a blanket question of what happens to the money. The general answer to what happens to the money is it returns to the institution. So the chief financial officer is now asking every institution to detail the trail of the monies from the, from 2022 sales that are enumerated in the report that I sent you. So he will transmit that to the full board, and I'll talk about that in a moment, as soon as we get it back from the institutions. We don't hold that information at system administration, so we have to ask all eight.
Regent Brown?
Heather Brown, for the record. I wanted to go back to, you were talking about the reviews.
Yes.
And I think you might have answered my question, but just for clarification, are the reviews of the presidents done annually on the, on, based off of when they were hired? So if they were hired in June, it gets done every year before we get to June, right? Or do you do them, all the presidents at the same time?
Great question. We use an academic year or a fiscal year, which for us are the same thing. So presidents are hired, there's a bunch hired in June currently, a couple in August, September, October. What we just did was used academic year 21, 22, so July to June 30. And then in the fall, I went through their performance with them and then filed my evaluation by the end of the year.
Okay.
Great question.
And then for my quick follow-up, I used June as an example because that's when you joined.
Correct.
The board. So your annual review will need to be done before June?
It would be done after June.
After June, sure.
Yeah, so after, yes.
But is there, because I know this has been a sticking point previously. So is it like a 30-day window? Like what is the, what is the?
The code doesn't mind us that way. It says that you will conduct, that the Chair will conduct an annual evaluation of the chancellor and so it would occur, I would think, sometime after June 30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions.
Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. So Chancellor Urkeyaga, I had a question. You mentioned there are six periodic reviews going to occur. I feel like I misheard something out of the, out of the eight. Is that because we have interim?
Nope. Mr. Chair threw you to Regent Downs. Thank you for the question. So no, it's because the anniversaries happened to fall that way. So six presidents hit their four-year mark next year.
Okay.
So in the 12 months prior to their contract, we need to do a periodic. So I will try to name them if I get them wrong. It'll be like the Stumpdale Hour. In June 30 of 2024, the contracts for Presidents Helens, Hilgerson and Zaragoza, I even did that in alphabetical order, would expire. So their periodic evaluations would be due. In, I think it's August, the contract for either President Whitfield or President Acharya is due. One is due in September, whichever one is not. So Presidents Whitfield and Acharya and then President Sandoval in October. Because next year, in August, September and October, Presidents Acharya, Whitfield and Sandoval will hit their contract date.
Wow.
President Pollard just finished a first year, which is at a year and five months, so not subject to a periodic yet. President Dowpey is an interim. He is not subject to a periodic. He will meet his one-year mark as interim on March the 4th.
So just a happy coincidence that there are six coinciding.
Yes.
Okay.
Happy might be an interesting adjective to think about managing. My office is already sort of headachey about managing six committee, because you appoint a committee at every campus, the chancellor meets with them, there is a consultant, there is a shared governance conversation at every campus, and then information has to return to this body so that you can act. So it will be many moving parts for you all in this next 18 months.
Thank you. Chair Delcalla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify too. At the time, we were giving three-year contracts and then, and so we were like extended a contract. I mean, I can't go to specifics, but we seemed to be at a four-year contract. So it just kind of happened. You don't normally have six in one year when there's only eight presidents, but that's just the way it happened. And sometimes it's how people leave and then their interim and then when they get replaced. So a whole bunch of factors really go into it, but I don't think any of us were like happy for the chancellor that he's got to do six evaluations. I mean, that's a lot. It's a lot, but he's up to the charge.
Any other questions about the duties of the chancellor? And then I'll cover one last area of how we work together, board and chancellor and presidents.
I want to say one more thing about evaluations. It's really important we do them. And the boards is, is, there's no accountability and that's, it's really not a good thing for this board, not to have accountability, because we've had problems in the past where chairs did not do their evaluations of their employees when they should have and it's led to big problems. So I would just challenge this board going forward that it's a new day and we need to be held accountable. We need to do our job because there's no repercussions if we don't, other than the voting public or criticisms in the paper and that kind of stuff. But I mean, we need to get back to basics as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Delcalla. Regent Borland?
Thank you, Chair. I have made this work eventually. All right. Now, I'm not sure if I should ask you, the chancellor, this question or the Chair. I've been a wee bit confused in this last week. We got emails from you and from Chair Brooks about hiring PIO or something. Forget, you know, forgive me if I don't get the term correct. Now, do you give the Chair permission to hire that person or does he give you the, I'm, you know, just totally confused with those.
Sure.
Emails we've been receiving. So if you clear that up for me, I'm a simple man.
I will do that, but I will do my best as a simple man myself. So two things happened this week, so let me differentiate them for you. I hired a Director of Community Engagement, Equity and Inclusion. That is a chancellor hire. That is a position in the office. By way of background, last year, I searched for a Public Information Officer. We go through a cer- We go through a search process here to hire an employee. That search failed. And so I decided to hire a firm, not an employee. So we can have a contract, one of those 400, with a firm. In working with the new chair, if you, I'll return you to item number five. The chancellor will, is to collaborate with the board chair for official communication on behalf of the board of regions. That could be, I have to send a letter to Senator Cortez Masto. I talked to the chair. I just had to do that at the end of December, so I had to talk to the outgoing chair. That is one example. I have to send a press release. I collaborate with the chair. In this instance, the hiring of the firm, because the chair has for months asked for better communications muscle at the system administration office, and we don't have it. The chair asked to collaborate with me on that process. And so he, I think kindly and transparency, sent you a note saying I'm going to assist in this process. I'm going to identify this firm. I think that not, with due respect to the chair, that may not have been as clearly stated. He is going to recommend a firm to me. If I don't like it, I'll tell him no. I've already told him no a lot, and he's been my chair for 12 days. We will agree on that firm, but he's leading the search. Because as you heard, I don't have some vice chancellors, and I'm trying to get ready for legislative session. So we're working together on this. He's going to identify a firm. The firm is contracted by the chancellor. Y'all don't have that authority. I do. I will sign the contract. And that contract will include this traditional ability to sever that contract. So that's how we're going to handle it for now. It's not ideal, but hiring in this market is proving difficult. I would like you to be in a place, you, the system, you, the board, where you have a PIO in-house. But I can't wait around any longer, and clearly the chair does not wish me to wait around any longer as he collaborates with me on this topic, to do another search. They take months. So we're hiring a firm as quickly as we can.
Just another question, Chair. So how, is it in our handbook that the chair can do this? Who gives him the permission? Maybe I should ask you that. But do you know that? Who gives him the permission that he can recommend
Yep.
somebody from that? Because it talks about money.
Yep. So the way I see this, this is in your handbook. The chair, the chancellor is to collaborate with the chair. So he is, in my view, collaborating with, I am collaborating with him, and he is collaborating with me to make this selection. It's ultimately, because you have delegated contract authority to the chancellor, I have to sign the contract. I have to agree to the contract. He's helping.
Okay, one last follow up question, Chair. So therefore, there is a position that we need real badly, and it was proved in the last two years. Well, why have we not done you? And the chair's just come on. Why are we not searching for a chief counsel and, I mean, counsel and chief of staff? That's a very, very important position. What's happening? Why is it being left behind? If you two can collaborate on getting this position that we are talking about, that to me at least doesn't seem as important to this board, then why aren't we doing that for a position that's very important to this board? Just, just, you know, help me here.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
So remember that slide. Those positions are appointed by the board. So if you wish to conduct a search for a chief of staffs and special counsel, that is about the board. All the other positions report to the chancellor. I failed a search for a PIO, and so I'm filling in with a contract, and the chair is hiring. If you wish to hire a chief of staff and special counsel, I am not involved in that process, nor am I involved in the hiring of a chief internal auditor. I am involved in the staffing of a committee for a president. The chief of staff and special counsel is a position that reports to this board. Chancellor, not to the chancellor. And I, and I don't mean to, like, not my problem. I'm trying to be clear about the code. That one's on you.
And that's why I asked that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just jump in for a moment before I, before we hear the next question from, from the next regent. To that, there, there probably was a better way for me to communicate in an email regarding what we were doing with this contracted position of bringing in somebody to facilitate communications and public relations for the board and do it in a manner in which it serves in conjunction with something that the system might, might be doing that is positive, that as a board, we would want to project out into the community. And so for the last two years, I have been very vocal in suggesting that one of the things that could support the board is somebody who takes care of our communications and our public relations. And frankly, there unfortunately hasn't been anything done regarding that. And so in collaboration with the chancellor, after lots of conversation, it is now moving forward, which I think, and I hope, is going to serve this entire board in a manner in which we are able to produce for our community, for our constituents, the very positive things that this board does in terms of shaping and supporting higher education in the state of Nevada. It looks like Regent DelCarlo is next with a question, so I'll go to you, Regent DelCarlo.
Thank you, Chair. And I do appreciate the openness and transparency in your letter. But I don't, if we're hiring a firm, that's a, I didn't understand it either and figured it would come up today. Why wouldn't we put an RFP out if you're hiring a firm? And then maybe there's an ad hoc committee or something to where we say these are the, what we're looking for in this firm? I mean, are you just arbitrarily, it's your idea what this firm's going to be and do for us? I mean?
So let me, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, did you conclude with your question? Because I didn't want to start to answer if, if you had.
No, go ahead and answer. I'm ready to.
Thank you, Regent DelCarlo. I actually want to ask our representative from the Attorney General's office, do we have any issue with, while we are talking about scope of work from the chancellor's office, regents, that this has come up? And are we okay in this matter of communicating regarding this, this very item?
This is Joel Becker for the record. It seems to me that as long as the discussion is out in front in public, it would be good. But I think it would be better served to agendize this for an upcoming meeting and then put on the agenda that there's going to be some possible action taken on this so that you can really deliberate, take some time, and focus on it. If it's not on the agenda item, if it's not an agenda item for this meeting, then you can't really take action on it, and any action taken might be stricken. So let's err on the side of caution and put a pin in it for the next meeting. Make sure that it's listed as an agenda item for possible action. And if you want to work with me on the language or Ms. Bordelov after, for the agenda item, we can do that.
And I, I appreciate that. So what I would offer is, I'm, I'm looking for at least the opportunity to, to answer Regent DelCarlo's question without moving into the minutia of, of this possibly being something on the agenda as, as in cooperation with the chancellor. It was not set to be as we, as we're moving through this process right now.
I think a generalized answer would not be running afoul of any OML questions as long as we're not getting into, like you say, minutia and details and actionable items.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the guidance. Regent DelCarlo, the, the general answer for this is that the, the, the chancellor, in having conversation, has demonstrated an urgency for this to get done based on things that are forthcoming. And in consideration of the fact that we have not, the board has not been in a position to have the opportunity of someone supporting effective and positive messaging. Yes, this, this is something that I feel is extremely important for the board and, and something that should move forward. And there is a time where we can revisit it. But with things moving in a manner in which they are, it's important that we have this type of support, that the board has this type of support. Regent Goodman, you have a question?
Regent Goodman, for the record. I just wanted to put on record that it's very important for this board and this group to basically control what our narrative is. That has not been done. And I think it's part of the reason why this board oftentimes gets such a bad rap in the media. So however you move forward with this, I do support this kind of, of action. It's very important, especially with a legislative session coming. So I just wanted to say that. Additionally, on the chief of staff and general counsel, do we not already have an incredible chief of staff in Carrie? Is that, is that two positions or is that one position?
Thank you, Regent Goodman. Chair Brooks, for the record. So the, the board had made a shift last year based on how things were moving. And the board voted to, to have Carrie in as our chief of staff. The, that is exactly what she's been doing for quite some time. And so we certainly have guidance with counsel, which is why we have representation with Jimmy Martinez, who is here with us, and obviously someone from the Attorney General's office to make sure that we're not violating OML. I, I hope that answers your question, but that's, that's essentially the course that, that the, the board has been on in terms of internally how we're getting some of these things done.
Brooks?
Yes, Regent Borland?
If I may, thank you. And this is through you to Chancellor Urquaga. I think it was your fifth slide or fourth slide, I don't remember, where you had put down the staff for the board. And you had, right? If you could pull that up, it would help me a wee bit. There you go. So we have to have these positions. Chief of staff and special counsel. What exactly is a special counsel? When it says we should have a position that is both those things, not just chief of staff or interim chief of staff? That's, you know, help me with that because you have it up there. And then after that, I would ask the chair, why isn't that position, which is part of our employees? Why isn't that more important than getting a PIO? Because I know I made a lot of noise also for a PIO, but not as much noise as I'm going to make for the chief of staff and, and special counsel. And to answer Ms. Goodman's statement about how we are perceived. And it's one of the reasons why we are so screwed up. We didn't have our own lawyer that we could talk to. And then the one we got, we kicked his ass out in three weeks, I think, or something. So. Ah, I got to learn how to work this thing. So why, and it's for both of you. Why don't we have that filled? Or is, or is it just you're stating that we should have these, and then it's up to this board to do something about chief of staff and special counsel? Will you help me?
For the record, thank you for the question. For the record, Dale Urquaga. So I will do my best to speak about the bylaws and the past because this issue will come before this board in the future. So this is where your deputy attorney general will wish to be judicious. The bylaws create a position of chief of staff and special counsel as one job. When that job has been vacant on two occasions in the last two years, the board has appointed an interim chief of staff only. That's the history. I can't give you the why. I can't give you the good or bad. I won't talk about it because it could become before you again. So that, that's that answer. Perhaps your lawyer can, Mr. Martinez, could explain what else is in the bylaws, but that's what I know. The position is the position, but on two occasions in the last two years, the board has appointed an interim that only does one part of that job. The only thing I would say about the PIO is we are going into legislative session. We don't have one, so we're contracting a firm. And I will state for the record, all the purchasing laws will be followed. Regent DelCarlo? All the purchasing law will be followed. So that's all I'm going to say. Because anything else that I might say, you might deal with on your positions, and I'm dealing with the hiring of a communications firm within the purchasing laws, purchasing code established by you and the state of Nevada.
Thank you, Chancellor Urquaga. Regent Breger?
Thank you, Susan Breger, for the record. Can I ask just this question? As can we get back to the onboarding? I feel like we've kind of segued into something completely different.
Thank you, Regent Breger, for that question. I think that's a fantastic idea, and if we could move along, that would suffice time.
Thank you.
Happy to, sir. Okay, quickly, I know I'm up against my time. I will try to give this last little primer. The ways in which the board of regents or individual regents gather and collect the information you need or exert the authority of your office are again, everyone, no one surprised, spelled out in the handbook. There are three primary tools which previous boards, not chancellors, created for you. And I'm going to try to explain those today because some of this is self-serving. It makes the chancellor, the cabinet, and the board staff's job and the internal audit staff's job a lot easier if we follow the handbook. So there's really three ways that we can do this. The first is what's called a regent request. You will see these periodically. They come in your email. They are always blind copied to you so you don't accidentally talk to each other about them. Regent requests for information are just what they sound like. When you, as a regent, wish to know what exists in a record, or you wish to ask a question about how the system or an institution is being run, you would submit or ask, and you can do that by calling me or a president, or by emailing, or you can do it in commentary at a meeting. But a regent request is a specific thing. They come to a chancellor, a vice chancellor, or a president. We compile that information, and it is sent back to all regents, and the regent making the request is identified. That is done because often the reason you're asking for that information, it is about something that may appear in a future agenda. And in order to prevent us from giving one of you information that we didn't give to another one of you, we send it to all of you. So when you have questions, if they're simple questions about an institution or about something that's happening here, pick up the phone and call the chancellor or a president. But if it is a more exhaustive question, or if when you pick up the phone and call, or use me, I may walk through the question with you and say, you know what? This rises to the level of a regent request, and so I'm going to respond to you in writing. Some things I can answer on the phone, some things I have to go do research for, or I have to have staff do research for. It's the same for a president. But you will get a formal written document back. It's a very formalized process when we do these requests. And we try to do them as an expedited manner as possible. Sometimes there's a lot of them in the queue, and sometimes other things come up. But we do try to get those out, and they always, except on the days when I forget, they are always distributed to you by the board office staff. So that's the first, a regent request. I want to know, Dale, where the Holy Grail is. I will ask Dale. Dale will do a regent request telling you what we know about where the Holy Grail is located. The second way you conduct your business is through new business requests. Every meeting of the board of regents contains an item for business at the end of the agenda for you to request items for consideration at future meetings. That's bolded because we get confused when you say, Mr. Chair, under new business, I would like to know where the Holy Grail is. Would you like to talk about that at a future meeting? Or are you making a regent request? And so I'm asking, you clearly differentiate. And you use new business agenda items to say, Mr. Chair, I would like this agenda item, the search for the Holy Grail, to be on a future meeting agenda. The chair decides if that will happen. And there's a whole section of the bylaw that is about that, which I will not go into. That is the board's office staff's job, which they can explain to you tomorrow. But that's a different thing from, I would like to know versus, I want a meeting agenda item to discuss or act upon. Makes sense? The last one, which is used rarely. The last one, which is used rarely, thankfully, but is dramatically different, is "I would like an investigation into where the Holy Grail has been hidden all this time," to continue my analogy, just because. Very different process. Requests for investigation by system or institutional staff, and that includes you folks in this section, because this is how we launch investigations, are done two ways. I asked the Board, you would ask the Board Chair and Chancellor, who make a joint decision on the necessity and appropriateness of the investigation. Just because you want one doesn't mean you're necessarily going to get one. You might just get an answer. You won't get an investigation. Or let's say you think the Chair and Chancellor are complicit in where the Holy Grail has been hidden all this time. You would ask the Audit Committee Chair, and that individual will work with the Chief of Internal Audit to determine the necessity and appropriateness of the audit. Different things. They're at different elevations. Audits are a thing. Investigations are slightly different. But even when you call Audit Chair, the Chair and Chancellor are to be notified. That, again, is spelled out in your processes. So my request, because here's what happens after a Board meeting that none of you see. We keep notes of all of the "I would like to know's" and "I want a new business item" and "I would like this investigated," and then we have to meet and say, "Where does this go? Does this go to the Chair? Does this go to the Chancellor? Mr. Chair, Madam Chair?" You have to decide if these things go on agenda items. I have to parse out those things that are differently. So all I'm asking for new Regents and for existing Regents as you enter a new year is that you know clearly which of those the things you're doing and that you read the handbook so you know and are reminded, this is a new business item for future investigations versus this is a request for information. So it just, this is my request. It makes our jobs easier to serve you, and we're not then all chasing the same amount of information, which you may have just wanted to produce a report to present at a Board meeting in three months, when really you just had a question. So help us help you. Those are your three tools for directing your staff, your Chancellor and your Presidents primarily, in these matters. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We have a couple, Chancellor. Regent Boyler?
Thanks, Chair Brooks. Do me a favor. Since you know that these are somewhere in our handbook or in the NRS or wherever they are, would you please send, now this is a request, right? So I'm making a request. Would you please send those exact places where such things are written to all of us, which you'll do then? That's, that would be really nice, especially for the new Regents that are coming on, so that we know, okay, you are telling us this because it's this, this, this in the book of them, right? Thank you so much.
Happy to do so, Regent Boyler, and I will treat that as a Regent request, and I will send it to all of you with the citations. Carrie probably already is pulling them up and sending them to me because she has the code memorized and I do not. Those are all in your handbook, so those are not NRS. Those are your Board's direction on how we operate. So I'm happy to send them when Carrie sends them to me.
Yeah. Thank you, Chancellor. I know we have another question, but I know you brought it up earlier and you stated it a few times. It does behoove not only current Regents but new Regents to often review that handbook and take a look at what policy is in there, because that sometimes will simplify a process of an inquiry or a request if it is read. Regent Perkins, you got another question?
Yes. I noticed that the, to get, there's something missing from the ways that we can get things looked at, where three Regents can request something to be put on the agenda.
Sure. Thank you, Regent Brooks. Mr. Chair, if I may, I did not cover those parts of your bylaws that are about the operation of the Board. I am not the Board's Chief of Staff or Special Counsel. I am not sure if in the Board briefing tomorrow you will receive that, but because that deals with Board agendas, that would be a question for your Chief of Staff. But the short answer to the question is, if you want an agenda item, three Regents can request it, and the Chair must place it on the agenda. Any other agenda item or new business request is at the discretion of the Chair. But you'll get that, I think, from another employee besides me. And that is in your handbook in the section Title 1, "The Bylaws," when you go home and read it tonight.
Are there any other questions that any Regents have for the Chancellor? Thank you very much for your time and for putting everything together and for fielding all the questions that you've answered. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board and to the new Regents, welcome, and it is a privilege to serve in this job. So thank you for letting me go over my time today.
Thank you. We will take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we will hear from Special Real Estate Counsel and former Regent Michael Wicksum. Five minutes, thank you. You're here? Okay. Fantastic. Thank you again, Special Real Estate Counsel and former Regent Michael Wicksum. Thank you very much for being here and giving us your presentation and guidance.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Brooks. It is a pleasure to be here with all of you. I extend my warmest congratulations to the new Regents and my appreciation to the existing Regents. I mean, it's an extraordinary opportunity. I treasure the time that I spent on the Board and the relationships that I developed and what I learned. And so it's an adventure. I'm not going to minimize the adventure, but it is a wonderful opportunity, and I'm excited and happy for all of you. The last year I was on the Board, several of the Regents banded together and wanted a new item of business to ban all PowerPoints. And so, because sometimes they get overwhelming, and here I am with a PowerPoint. But sometimes that's the best way to convey information. So in any case, I apologize for the PowerPoint, but I'm grateful for the opportunity to chat and to be with you. I know it was funny, one of the Regents, when I was on the Board, one of his constituents came to him and said, "Well, what are you going to do with all of the big money now that you're earning on the Board?" And the Regent said, "Well, what do you mean?" He said, "Don't you make like $400,000 a year?" And he said, "Well, no." And I remember when I was on the Board, I've had several constituents say to me, "So what are you going to do with your law practice now that you're on the Board and working on that full-time?" And I tried to explain that it just doesn't work that way. So not everybody appreciates what you do and the service that you render, but I certainly do, and I appreciate the time and the effort and the sacrifice you made for the public service. But it's a great opportunity, and I appreciate your willingness to embark on that adventure, and that's wonderful. In Nevada, as it's been mentioned earlier by the Chancellor, unlike virtually all other states, you are an elected Board, but you also, in addition to being elected Board, you have responsibilities for eight different institutions on three different levels. And that creates a whole new level of complexity and a whole new level of issues about which you need to be aware. And that's one of my objectives here today, is to give you some, not, it's not an exhaustive study of what your responsibilities are, but I hope I can at least give you enough information so that you can ask questions, so that you can understand generally the direction that you're going and your responsibilities. You hear the term fiduciary a lot, but I think it's important that you take a moment and try to understand today what that means in the context of your service on the Board, because it does have a specific meaning, and it has some statutory responsibilities that you need to be aware of. A university president once, when I was on the Board, said, "Well, wait a minute. I'm a fiduciary too." Well, actually, he was wrong. Technically, the President, while he has contractual obligations and certain duties, he's not a fiduciary. You are. And today, I'm here to explain what that difference is and what it means and what your responsibilities are. Let's go. Carrie assures me I can operate this clicker, so we'll see how it goes. There we go. I think at the very outset, it's good to get an example of what a fiduciary may be in a different context, because that can be instructive for you. A trustee of a trust, some of you may have trusts, for example, for estate planning. The trustee is a fiduciary. A member of a corporate Board of Directors, you're a fiduciary. I was chatting with the Chancellor a few moments ago. When you think about the system, it's just enormous, just in terms of the assets that you hold as a fiduciary are measured in the billions of dollars. You have tens of thousands of employees, hundreds of thousands of students. You have a big role, and you take that responsibility as a fiduciary, much like a corporate, a member of a corporate Board of Directors. Some, not all securities brokers and investment advisors are fiduciaries. A court-appointed guardian has a fiduciary obligation. For example, at one point in time, my wife and I had a responsibility as a ward for an individual. And in that responsibility, we had a fiduciary obligation to this young woman as appointed by the Court. And so that would be an example of fiduciary duty. An attorney has a fiduciary duty to a client, and some accountants do. So that, I hope, gives you a general idea of what it means to be a fiduciary. There are certain ethical obligations that are imposed on a fiduciary. Public officials have to be transparent as to economic and personal interests. All of you filled out a financial disclosure form. That's certainly part of it. Public officials must promote fair processes and merit-based decisions. Public officials can't use your office for personal financial gain. We'll talk more about that in specifics. And public officials must not receive or make inappropriate gifts or receive other perks. And we'll talk about that, too. You have to make certain disclosures in terms of the gifts that you receive. So you have to be careful in that regard. The starting point for statutory duty as a Regent really is Nevada revised statutes, 396-122. I'm going to read that carefully because I think it's important that you consider it carefully. A member of the Board of Regents shall not be interested directly or indirectly, as principal, partner, agent, or otherwise, in any contract or expenditure created by the Board of Regents or in the process or the results thereof. And we'll drill down on that just a bit more. If you go to 281A 420, and that's a general statute that talks about public officials, except as otherwise provided in this section, there are certain things that you can't do. You can't participate in decisions in which the decision is connected with your receipt of a gift or a loan, in which you have a pecuniary or a financial interest, or the public officer's commitment is in a private capacity to the interests of another person. So if you make a decision on the Board, you can't use your Board position to further the interests of an individual. I'll give you a specific example. All the time when I was on the Board, I would receive calls saying, "Get my son into dental school," or "Get my daughter into the medical school," or, "This didn't work out to me on this grade thing." And I would get those calls all the time, and members of the Board, I'm sure, have had those calls before. You can't do that. I mean, I know it sounds obvious, but what's obvious will sneak up on you. And so the minute you hear that kind of a question, you need to be careful, and you need to say, even though it makes folks unhappy, you can't involve yourself in those kinds of decisions. Now, there are certain duties that, well, in essence, while you can't vote on some things if you have some sort of interest in the matter, you're going to hear, if you have a question, you should go to your General Counsel, and we can talk about that, and the General Counsel can give you some advice in about when you should recuse and when you shouldn't. For example, when I was on the Board, I represented certain banks. I could never vote on a matter that involved any of my clients when I was on the Board because that was a conflict of interest. So I would publicly disclose that conflict and say, "Can't vote on this because I have a conflict." And you may run into that situation from time to time, and you may have to abstain. But as indicated by 281A 420, there is a bias towards you voting. You should vote to the extent that you can vote. What you don't want to be in is in a position where you abstain from everything just because you don't want to vote on something that's a difficult decision, and that happens from time to time. Some Regents may say, "Well, I don't want to be publicly associated with decisions, so I'll just abstain." And you can't. That's just not consistent with your duties as a Regent. I hope that makes sense. So you may abstain from voting if you have a conflict of interest, and if there is a legitimate conflict of interest, you should. You shouldn't use an abstention to avoid voting. Does that make sense to everybody? In that regard, that becomes a critical issue because you have a duty to vote. You have a duty to participate and a duty to involve yourself. So a brief definition of the term fiduciary is, I think, critical. And I don't mean to be pedantic, but I think when you go back, the history of the term gives some flavor and context to what it means and what your responsibilities are, because it's a big deal. It was first used in an English language somewhere around 1593, according to the Oxford English Dictionary. It originates with Latin, fiduciarius, which means literally a person who receives something to hold for the benefit of someone else. And so, for example, if Bob said, "Listen, I want Mary, you to hold this thing of value for the benefit of my grandson, and you're supposed to be deliverate in 20 years," then by definition, Mary then became a fiduciary. Does that make sense to everybody? But in a larger sense, as a member of the Board of Regents, you have received in trust property and assets for the benefit of students and faculty and the state as a whole. If you go to the real property records, which I look at a lot, the Board of Regents holds title to real property as the Board, and you hold title in a capacity as a fiduciary. Now, you may hold title for the benefit of, for example, the University of Nevada Reno or UNLV, Nevada State or the community colleges, but you hold title as a fiduciary for the benefit of the students, for the faculty, and for the citizens of the state. And that's a big deal. The concept, while it came into being in Roman law, was adopted into English jurisprudence, and as you may know from your history, we adopted in this country largely English jurisprudence as part of American jurisprudence. Now, used as an adjective, or as a noun, rather, fiduciary is a person to whom property or power is entrusted for the benefit of another. So you are, in fact, a fiduciary. As an adjective, you would have, for example, a fiduciary obligation. You have a fiduciary obligation to care for the assets you receive, to maximize their value, to allow their deterioration. Now, that seems like a broad esoteric concept, and in one sense it is, but what it means is when you have an item on the agenda with respect to property or assets or accounts, you have a responsibility to maximize the value. For example, those of you on the Investment Committee, you have an obligation to maximize the returns on the investments that you have because you hold those funds, and you hold a substantial amount of money on the Investment Committee. And by the way, you've done very well historically. I want to compliment the Board, and the Board's investment policies have been very positive. And Andrew will assert to this fact. I mean, you've done very well, but you have to manage and guard the investments and invest them wisely and properly, and that's part of your role. That's one of the subcommittees on the Board, and it's a big deal, and it's important. You have certain duties as a fiduciary. You have a duty not to be in a situation in which your personal or family interest or responsibilities conflict in any way with your fiduciary obligations. And I alluded to that a moment ago. You shouldn't vote on something, for example, if you have a financial interest in it. You shouldn't try to help a family member get into this particular college or get admitted, et cetera, et cetera. That's responsibility. You have a duty not to be in a situation in which your fiduciary duty conflicts with another or a different fiduciary duty. I'll give you a specific example. Because of your involvement in the community, you may be participating in different Boards or have different responsibilities, and that's okay. That's a wonderful thing. But you just need to remember that if you're participating in a different Board, you can't put yourself in a position of conflict in serving on the other Board. You have a duty not to profit in any way from your fiduciary position, and you must conduct yourself at the higher level than, I mean, this is language from a court, but I think it's, well, it's a little poetic. I think it's appropriate. You have to conduct yourselves at a level higher than that trodden by the crowd. And the distinguishing or overriding duty of a fiduciary is the obligation of undivided loyalty. And I think it helps if I could give you some specific rules. I call these my seven commandments for the Regents. My experience has been, if you follow these seven commandments, you won't get into trouble. And you don't want to be into trouble, and I'm going to go through the seven Regent commandments in detail, because if you do this, I can almost guarantee you're going to be okay. If you don't, if you fudge on it, you're going to have trouble. I can almost guarantee you, at one point in time or another, you will. You're a public person now, and you have a public position, your responsibility to the public, and you're responsible to the public, and you're also subject to public scrutiny. And if you don't want a problem, follow the seven commandments of the Regents. Regents should never use their office to benefit themselves, their family, or other individuals or groups with which or with whom they have a connection financially, professionally in any way. Number two, Regents shouldn't use their public office to further political ambitions or to favor any particular group or individual. I need to pause there for just a moment. When I was on the Board, I had certain political individuals who came to me, in particular when I was Chair, to ask me to take certain actions or do certain things or look at certain people that was in their political interest. I can't do that. I couldn't do that. You can't do that. They weren't happy. They weren't happy about it, but you can't do that, or you're going to get into trouble. You have a duty of absolute honesty in your public dealings, remembering that honesty by itself isn't necessary but not a sufficient condition. You may remember that from chemistry. You can be honest, but it's not sufficient just to be honest. Being a fiduciary is more than being honest. You have to assert yourself and do your best to make sure that you have the best outcome. Regents have a duty of absolute loyalty to the institutions you serve. Now, I need to take a side note there. You have eight different institutions. You have a loyalty not to individual institutions but to all eight. You have a loyalty to the system, and you can't use your position as a Regent to foster the interests of one institution over another because you have responsibilities for all eight. I hope that makes sense. That makes you unique, I think. Anywhere in the country, you won't find another situation. And it creates some specific challenges for you because I can promise you, I can promise you, if it hasn't happened in the last week, it will happen in the next, that one of your constituents or one of your friendly public officials will come to you and say, "You need to help out this institution," or "You need to do this," or "You need to do that" to benefit this institution. And you can't do that because of the nature of your duties. Regents have a duty of inquiry, to ask sometimes difficult, challenging questions. And that can be difficult sometimes, but that's your responsibility. With that said, my experience on the Board was, the best decisions are made in the tension that comes from differing points of view. That's why you have a Board of 13. And it's wonderful to have different points of view. But just remember, you have a responsibility to have a duty of inquiry. Regents have a duty to be prepared. When I first went on the Board, we didn't have the benefit of your technology. In my first Board meeting, I literally got two banker's boxes full of documents I had to read before the Board meeting. That was intimidating, but you know what? You have more than that now because it's all electronic. And so they slip all sorts of stuff in there that they couldn't fit into the banker's boxes when they came to me. But you do have a duty to be prepared. Regents finally have a duty to act if action is required in order to protect ENSI institutions and assets, even when such actions may be difficult or unpopular, and even when such actions may have adverse political repercussions. Now, I love this quote. It's from an English case. I want to share it with you again. I don't mean to be a dramatic theatrical reader, but I think the language is from an English court. I think, really, if not poetic, I think encapsulates the duty of a fiduciary, and I think it's worth taking a moment. A fiduciary is someone who has undertaken to act for and on behalf of another in a particular matter and circumstances which give rise to a relationship of trust and confidence. The distinguishing obligation of a fiduciary is the obligation of loyalty. The principal is entitled to the single-minded loyalty of his fiduciary. This core liability has several facets. A fiduciary must act in good faith. He must not place himself or herself in a position where his duty or his interests may conflict. He may not act for his own benefit or for the benefit of a third person without the informed consent of his principal. This is not intended to be an exhaustive list, but it is sufficient to indicate the nature of the fiduciary obligations. They are the defining characteristic of a fiduciary. This is from the Association of Governing Boards, a statement on fiduciary duties and public trust. I'm not going to read this in detail, but it's worth it for you to read it when you review these materials. The fiduciary has a duty of care. A fiduciary has a duty of loyalty, and a fiduciary has a duty of obedience. Let me just drill down on those just a moment because I think it's worth it to understand what it means. Duty of loyalty. Your duty of loyalty is, as I said earlier, to ENSI as a whole, not to individual institutions. It's not to your own political interests. That's just not appropriate. The duty of care, remember duty of loyalty, duty of care, is to be responsible, as I said earlier, for the assets that you are responsible for, the individuals that you're responsible for. And finally, the duty of obedience. Now, that seems a bit draconian, and I think that's worth it to back up on that for just a moment and to drill down. There are two aspects to the duty of obedience. First, it's your responsibility to make sure the institutional presidents comply with your Board policies, procedures, and statutes. That's one aspect of the duty of obedience. The other aspect is that you yourselves comply with Nevada statutes and your own policies and procedures. Now, I'm going to finish up with a couple of thoughts that my hope is will be helpful for you as you go forward on a practical basis. As the Chancellor indicated earlier, you have certain positions within the system that support you as a Board. One of those is your General Counsel. Let me read this from Section 3 of the Board Policies, or the Board Handbook. The Chancellors may, as provided in Title II, Chapter 1 of the Code, appoint certain executive staff to assist him with the executive effective operation of ENSI, to include Vice Chancellors, System General Counsel, and any other administrative positions that may report to the Chancellor. I want you to skip ahead to the italicized portion. Now, this is important because it affects you individually and affects how you operate. In the event a professional conflict of interest arises with respect to the reporting line between the System General Counsel and the Chancellor, the System General Counsel shall report directly to the Board Chair until such time as a conflict of interest is removed. That's a critical point. Now, let me explain, if I may. As an attorney, I used to work for a large financial institution before I started my own practice. My duty was not to the person to whom I reported. My duty was to the institution, the organization that I worked for. In this case, Counsel Martinez's duty is to ENSI. It's not to the Chancellor. It's to ENSI and not to the Chancellor. He reports to the Chancellor, but his fiduciary duty as an attorney is to the system as a whole. Now, from time to time in private practice, there were times when I was asked by individuals who had reporting authority over me to do things or to say things when I worked for this large institution that were against, sometimes the law, and sometimes against corporate policy. In those situations, I went above that person, and I said, "This is what I've been asked to do. It's wrong." Now, that puts me in a difficult position, and it would put General Counsel in a difficult position, but to be candid, that's their job, and that's part of their responsibility. And so you need to keep that as mind as you go forward. Now, that becomes critical for you because you have a right to rely on legal counsel from your General Counsel. If you rely on advice from the General Counsel, you are entitled to certain legal protections. If you don't, then you're not. There is a temptation, and I saw it happen, where Regents would go opinion shopping. You hear something, and you say, "Well, I don't like that. That doesn't make sense to me." So they'd go to their buddy who was an attorney, or they'd go to this person, and they, "That doesn't sound light," right? And the person at dinner would say, or over cocktails would say, "You know, that's not right either." And so the Regent would come back and say, "I've got legal opinion that's different than General Counsel's." But you can't do that. If you do, you're not entitled to the protections of the law that are extended to you if you rely on counsel from your General Counsel. Does that make sense to everybody? One of the benefits that you have now that we didn't have is to have someone from the Attorney General's Office here to advise you on the open meeting law. That's a great benefit. I hope you take advantage of that because that can be a real landmine. Open meeting law issues will sneak up on you. One of the benefits of the open meeting law is that it helps you fulfill your responsibility as a Regent, if your fiduciary responsibility as a Regent. On one particular, this is my last story, and then I'll stop and see if you have any questions. But I was at a game one time, and someone came to me and said, "I'd like to introduce you to someone who was on the Board of Regents years and years ago, like 20 years ago." And I said, "Okay." Fortunately, I can't remember the person's name. And so he said, "So you're on the Board now?" And he said, "You're Chair?" And I said, "Yes." And he said, "How in the world do you get anything done with the open meeting law?" I said, "What?" He said, "You know, we used to get it together on the phone. Every time we had a meeting, we'd work everything out. Our meetings were much shorter. We didn't have all of the problems you have." And I thought, "I bet you didn't." But it just doesn't work like that. And sometimes the open meeting law can be an aggravation, but it can also be your best friend. And I hope you understand and appreciate the benefits that come from following the open meeting law carefully and judiciously because that can help you fulfill your responsibilities generally as a member of the Board. We've talked about a lot of materials that are worth a full semester in law school today, and we've just kind of hopped along and talked about it. If you ever have any questions, call Jimmy. And I mean that facetiously to some degree. What I try to do, I have a unique role. I try not to inject myself in the Board, so you won't, I'm not going to be calling you. If you call me, that's great, but I'm also going to be telling Jimmy because ultimately that's your protection. I do that not because I'm being rude, but your protection is receiving counsel from the General Counsel. And so I'm happy to talk, but I always communicate in collaboration with the System General Counsel. So I've said a lot. Let me stop for a moment. Do you have any questions? Can I be helpful in any way other than to stop talking?
Thank you for your presentation. We greatly appreciate it. Regent Boylan does have a question.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, great presentation there. I had two quick questions, but I'm going to ask Jimmy first. I hope I'm not going to break the open meeting law by just asking questions. Thank you, sir. See, I'm being safe. Now, the first thing you said about abstaining to vote, last year, I saw it a few times in different places. People suddenly decide they need to go wee-wee or something, and they don't vote because they don't want to do it. Is, what, what do you do about something like that? Or they just say, "Oh, I've got a phone call. I'm flying or doing something." And how does that stop? How do you stop it? Or who stops it? The Chair? Can question them? Is it written anywhere? I hate seeing this. What's the punishment? What's the fine?
Let me make, if I can, Regent Boylan, make a couple of observations. Michael Wicksum again, for the record. I always wondered why we say that because everybody knows anyway. In any case, that's largely unenforceable because it's a matter of personal responsibility and conduct. And so I can't say, "Don't leave. I know you really don't have a telephone call, or I know you really don't have this or that. I know you're just trying to avoid it." Practically speaking, you can't do that. So that becomes a matter of individual responsibility. And so the only reason I mention it in that context today is to set a standard. I think individually, we all need to set a standard of, as a member of the Board, when I was on the Board, as members of the Board, that you're here to vote, and you're here to make a decision, and ultimately, that becomes an individual decision. I hope that's responsive to your question.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. I had a second question, Chair.
Sure.
A quick one. I have a wee bit, or I shouldn't say wee bit, a great bit problem with obedience. When I hear that word, I think of my dogs being obedient, but anything else that's like a, "What did you mean? I didn't quite get it." Obedience to whom?
Well, to go back to what I was talking about, Regent Boylan, in that sense, obedience is a strong word, and I think can be misunderstood. So in the context of the law and in the context of that particular segment of a fiduciary duty, I don't mean it in a condescending way, but I think, just as you have a duty to obey traffic laws and obey statutes, there's a duty of obedience in the sense that, a better word is probably in this context, to comply with. I think you have a duty to comply with statute. You have a duty to comply with Board policies. You have a duty to make sure that the system complies with Board policies and statutes. And I think that's probably better phrased in that way as opposed to obedience because it can be misunderstood. Please.
This is Deputy Attorney Becker for the record. Just to piggyback on what you're saying, I think execution might even be a moron-pointed and relaxing word for you because, again, you're the fiduciary, you're representing the Board's wishes or whoever you're the fiduciary for. So it's obedient to whatever will they wish, whatever, you know, instructions you've been received from them. So it's really executing what you've been instructed to or how you've been instructed to carry out.
And that's basically, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
And that's basically through the NRS or the open meeting laws and our handbook that we are obedient to them.
Well, just as a fiduciary, that's part of your duty. That's part of the fiduciary duties.
That's it. Thank you so much.
May I, if I may, follow up?
Yes, sir.
Chair Brooks, may I follow up, please, on one point? I think that was an excellent point. I think execution is another good word, comply and execution. And I can give you a specific example. When I was on the Board at one particular time, we had an institutional president who refused to comply with Board directives. And they didn't think they were right. They had expressed their views publicly, but the Board had voted and made a decision. But the institutional president continued to refuse to comply with the Board directives. Now, our duty as a Board then was, we had voted as a Board, was to insist on compliance. And I think that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Regent DelCarlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When, I'm glad you're here, Mike.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to be here.
This is the fourth time I've heard this from you, and this is really great. It's a good refresher. But when we don't have our own legal counsel as a Board, which we haven't very much in the last two years, who has jurisdiction? At a meeting like this, we have our General Counsel for ENSI, Mr. Martinez, and then we have a representative from the Attorney General's Office. In the past, when we had our own General Counsel, and there'd be a difference of opinion, those two would go, we'd pause, and they'd go have a little sidebar, and they'd come back, and they'd be on the same page. And I've seen where the Attorney General person and the General Counsel person didn't agree. Who has jurisdiction? Who's the ultimate authority here in this circumstance?
Thank you. And Regent DelCarlo, that's such a good question. And I'm going to attempt to answer it in a couple of ways. And I need to be careful because I don't want to violate the open meeting law, but I need to give you a brief history lesson. I was on the Board when we created the position of Special Counsel to the Board. And prior to that time, that would have been in 2008 or '09, prior to that time, all we had was a Chief of Staff. Now, at that point in time, the Board made the decision that we needed counsel for a specific reason. Now, I think, to answer your question, and I'm going to be careful because I don't want to violate the open meeting law, you would be well advised to go back to the underlying bases for the decision that we made at that time. And I'm happy to talk to you about that at some point in time. But we created a unique position and for some unique reasons and because of some unique circumstances. As far as the open meeting law is concerned, your guidance comes from the Deputy Attorney General. The Deputy Attorney General is here to enforce the open meeting law. And so whoever it is who's ever sitting in that chair, and that's one of the reasons I'm so thrilled that you have somebody from the Attorney General's Office, because we had all sorts of fights about the open meeting law. I mean, I lost two or three years of my life, I'm sure, over the open meeting law. And so you, if I would have had the, I would have lived much longer had we had somebody from the Attorney General's Office in the Board when I was there. So whoever's there, that governs. So that's where you take that counsel. Okay? Does that help? That's it. Now...
Yeah, I wish I'd known that before, but thank you.
Okay. Second, with respect, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy. Do you agree with that? We have not talked about that.
No, I do agree.
Okay. The second part of the question has to do, and it goes back to the presentation that I made, ultimately, counsel for the Board is General Counsel. General Counsel Martinez is your General Counsel. If you follow the advice and counsel of your General Counsel, you have a safe harbor. Now, the challenge you have when you have two attorneys is that brings that particular point into some ambiguity. And so that's an issue that you have to resolve as a Board. And it gets back to the point that Regent Boylan made, and that's beyond the scope of my presentation, and it has not been agendized, but that's something that you have to address. But right now, your safe harbor harbors with the General Counsel. Does that make sense? And you have procedures in place if there is a conflict so that you can default to the General Counsel, and that's your protection. Now, I need to give some unsolicited commentary. I've worked with the Board on one level or another for now for nearly 20 years. I can say that you have extraordinarily legal representation on all levels of the Counsel. You are well represented at all of your systems and in the General Counsel's Office. And I'm not just saying that. I mean, I have other things to do with my life, you know? I mean, I mean, I, I have other things to do with my life, you know? I, I'm really happy to be here. Nobody's paying me to be nice in the sense that I'm trying to be as honest and as forthright as I can because you need to know it, and I think it's important. You are well represented. You really are. And I deal with these attorneys all through the system all the time. And you have good counsel. They're dedicated. They're thoughtful. They're concerned. They want to do the right thing. They understand. Now, if you look at some reporting lines on the system, I mean, there are lines that go everywhere. I mean, it's really scary. And so, um, but ultimately, the responsibility of an attorney in the system is to the system. And they, the reason why they have dual reporting responsibilities is they report to the president, but they also report to Jimmy. And they do that, counsel Martinez. And they do that for their own protection, so that they have a safe harbor as well. Does that make sense to everybody? That's why it's structured in that way, for their protection and for your protection.
Thank you very much. I know that, uh...
If I might add something very quickly. Um, again, Deputy Attorney General Becker for the record. I guess the question always comes down to the great law school response, it depends. It depends. You can never go wrong in law school with that answer. But basically, if it's something substantive about what's going on in the actual board, that I would refer all those to general counsel. If it's something procedural or about the meeting itself, or how something is brought up or expressed, that's more OML.
I, I absolutely agree. And I, I, I don't take issue with any of that. I think, and thank you for that clarification, that the attorney general is responsible for the procedures here.
And just for your own, um, I guess, not research, but reference, um, and the OML statutes are at NRS 241. It's a little bit of a dense read, but there's also an, uh, open meeting law manual that's available on the attorney general's website that you can give a quick read through. And those are really good reference points for when you want to consider motions and agendizing issues and things like that, um, answering public comment, dealing with, um, all OML issues. This way, you know going in what your responsibilities and parameters are. Okay?
All right.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Um, Regent Brown has a question, and then Jimmy Martinez has a comment.
Um, now that we're all L1 students.
There won't be a test.
I, uh, I don't want to be redundant, and I don't want to split hairs here, but when you were referencing general counsel and not seeking, um, our own personal counsel, I think I just want clarification on, Mr. Martinez is the board's counsel, not Heather, not Regent Brown's counsel. So when you said not to be seeking outside counsel because that puts us in not being covered, I'm just trying to get a little bit of clarification on that. And again, no specific example of why I would need this, however...
I can give you one. Because I was in that position when I was on the board, when I was chair, and there was a time when I got my own attorney. But that was for a specific issue related to me because of some things that were happening on the board. Now, I, I had my own legal counsel because it affected me as an individual. What I'm talking about is a, a system issue. And it, when we're talking about system issues and board issues, you can rely on, on, on general counsel. If it relates to you as an individual, that's a different matter. And I think, you're not splitting hairs. That's an important distinguishing point. So thank you.
And Jimmy Martinez, for the record. I'm, I'm trying not to say too much because really any of these topics can take hours if we really go down the rabbit hole. But I did want to say, you know, when it comes to, as, as we're talking about, um, special counsel, that role and my role, it really comes down to when this board gets back together to discuss that position and how it's going to fill that position, it's very important to identify the very specific role of that position, which historically has been open meeting law and ethics. Because I think there's been a lot of confusion on the board with what position gives you that safe harbor and that, that legal protection for relying on that legal advice. And when it comes to open meeting law and ethics, that is the position that gives you that. And that's why, Regent Del Carlo, as you said, a lot of times in the past, we would go in the hallway, we'd, we would discuss these matters, make sure we're on the same page, so that you could rely on the right person's advice in the meeting. But for all other matters outside of those, it would be, it would be our office because we represent the organization, and you are a fiduciary of the organization. And a lot of this, I'll get into my, you know, into my PowerPoints tomorrow, a, a lot of this discussion also, so I don't want to go too into it now. But I just want to kind of make that point and, and let you know a lot of these conversations will come tomorrow.
Chair Brooks, may I make one follow up?
Absolutely.
I, I don't mean through any of my presentation today to frighten you. Maybe it has a little. Maybe it, we're all, it's all good to have a little scare once in a while. But my hope is, by following those guidelines, especially the seven regent commandments, that that will allow your service on the board to be a positive one, to be an enriching one, to be a productive one, to be a satisfying one. Your ability to have a positive experience and to effect positive change largely is a function of your willingness and ability to embrace your duties as a fiduciary. If you do that, it's wonderful. Your safe harbor is being a fiduciary. And then you can be vocal, you can project your opinions, you can have disagreements. That can be a wonderful, marvelous experience, a very positive experience. And so that your service on the board, you'll look back with fondly as opposed to painfully.
Thank you. I know Regent Del Carlo has a question.
I just wanted to point out to the new regents that in your board pack in, um, the library, we've tried to put as much stuff over time to help you, and that, um, open meeting law and ethics and government is in there. So it's, it's a good reference. And then I just had one other question for, uh, Mr. Wixem. Safe harbor, can you explain, if you don't follow counsel, you, you give up that right to safe harbor, then can you then be sued as an individual even though you're on a board?
Uh, the short answer is yes. And, and I can give you, the specific example would be on the open meeting law. If you follow counsel, if you follow the counsel of your general counsel, in this case, it would be the attorney general in compliance with the open meeting law, that's a safe harbor for you. If you don't, you're on your own. And you would be subject to the penalties associated with the open meeting law. When I first came on the board, the open meeting law penalties were not significant, to put it mildly. They are significant now. And it is a meaningful statute.
Thank you. I know we have another question from, uh, Regent Boylan.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Chair. If Jimmy, and this is part of, for all of us to learn onboarding, because we didn't get it, so it's really nice. If Jimmy is in a catch-22 situation, and he has to answer to the chancellor, right? You answer to the chancellor? Oh, sorry, Mr., uh, counsel Martinez, I love Jimmy, but that's why I keep saying Jimmy. Yeah. So if I can finish that, I know you have, so if he's in a catch-22 situation, and he's representing us here, but we are, have something against the chancellor, you know, where does he stand? Who is he representing then?
As I said earlier, uh, Michael Wixem for the record. I always forget to do that. Regent Boylan, uh, the general counsel's duty is to the system, not to his supervisor. So he has a duty to the system. The system is, is represented by the board. So ultimately, the general counsel has a duty to the board through the chair. That's the duty of the general counsel. And that's, as I said earlier, when I was, when I was in, represented a large institution and I worked for them, sometimes that put me in a difficult position, but that was my job. Sometimes he may be in a difficult position, but that's his job. And his job is to represent the board, not individuals within the system.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions from regents. If there are none, I want to thank you very much for the presentation. I think we've all learned something, um, and we greatly appreciate your time and you being here. Um, thank you also, Chancellor, for your presentation again and providing guidance. Uh, we are now officially in recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, might I recommend, uh, before adjournment for the day, you might want to open up and request public comment now as well as the opening and closing of the next meeting.